Are we on? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Thank you for being here with us today. We apologize for the slight delay. As you may have heard from yesterday at our swearing in ceremony, we have some new technology that we're testing out for the first time. We did use it yesterday and we are broadcasting officially our first official commission meeting today on a livestream on the Weaver County website. We're really, really excited about that. If you go to the Weaver County website, you should be able to find a link to livestream and watch the proceedings live as well. They will be archived and you'll be able to pull them up and watch and listen at the same time. So, we are way excited about this, extremely excited. It's been a long time coming. As I mentioned yesterday, Commissioner-elect Ebert stood up in one of our commission meetings a few months ago and challenged us to do a little better at being able to get our message out. And so, we are excited. We've been feverishly working towards that goal and finally it has come together in a way that we are very, very proud of and we think that there will be more steps along the way hopefully that will continue to make our proceedings more available to anyone who wants to participate. Along with that, I have just some thoughts I want to share a little bit later, but I'll do that in the thought of the day and we'll begin, first of all, with our Pledge of Allegiance by Brooke Stewart.
Will the audience please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so as far as the thought, I had two short thoughts that I came up with today. One of them is by Joan Baez, American folk singer, who said briefly, "Action is the antidote to despair." And going along with that, Kristin Gilibrand stated, "I find that when you open the door towards openness and transparency, a lot of people will follow you through." So, that goes along with what we're trying to do here today. Obviously, there's a lot of different ways that we can participate in our government and in the process that's so important. It was something that I worked on quite a bit as a legislator and I'm grateful to have taken, been able to take this step now in the county. We can't force people to participate, positive or negatively. People have to make that choice to engage in their government in one way or another. Generally, unfortunately, what we see is people only participate when they're upset about something, but we'll take that too, but we need active participation at all times. We're hoping that this step will make it more possible for more people to be involved in whatever way they see fit. So, it'll give us opportunities to be able to look back into the archives, but also to be able to participate on a livestream if you can't be in the meeting with us. So, we're excited. We appreciate the recommendation from Commissioner Ebert and with that, we want to extend an official welcome to Commissioner Ebert as his first day in office. Commissioner Ebert, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah. I'm very excited to be here. It's been a long process, filled with a lot of people who supported me and worked diligently and I appreciate all the hard work that's went into it. Specific to our ability to livestream these meetings, I spent a tremendous amount of time talking to people and when I first started out, there was this kind of belief that we had voters that were apathetic and people didn't want to be involved and I found that wasn't true. What I found was people were very busy in their lives. They wanted to be more involved, but we have not reached out with the technology and the forums that allows them in the medium that they use to gather information. And after talking to many people, this was one of the ideas that we came up with and I'm very excited. The staff has put a tremendous amount of time and done a tremendous job and we're looking forward to trying to find other ways and other mediums to allow people to be interactive and to participate and to view and to get knowledge and to be involved. And as a county government, I have seen a tremendous commitment to that and will continue working forward on that. So, I'd like to say thank you to staff. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. We're excited to have you with us, Commissioner. We look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. And we echo those comments regarding our staff. They have really worked hard to put this together and we're very proud of them, all the work that they've done. Okay, let's move on then with our business for the day. Being the first of the year, we have a lot of, I guess, organizational things is the word to kind of get things going for the first of the year. We'll begin with our consent items. Item number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $34,448.68. Request for approval to ratify warrants, number 316-764 through 317-072, in the amount of $849,661.83, dated December 26, 2014. Request for approval to ratify warrants, number 317-073 through 317-085, in the amount of $1,021,056.15, dated December 30, 2014. Request for approval of warrants, number 317-086 through 317-145, in the amount of Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on December 23, 2014. Request for approval of ACH payments to U.S. Bank in the amount of $113,873.81 for purchasing card transactions made through the billing cycle ending November 15, 2014. Request for approval of ACH payments to U.S. Bank in the amount of $79,368.28 for purchasing card transactions made through the billing cycle ending December 15 of 2014. Request for approval of change order, number 7, amended to the contract by and between Weaver County and the Geneva Rock Products for the Powder Mountain Road and Utility Project for the revised amount of $1,342,019.70. And a request from the Weaver County Recorder Surveyors Office for approval to retire the following parcels and abate the taxes accrued on parcel numbers 15-301-0008, 17-127-0009, Commissioners, those are our consent items for the day. Are there any, is there any discussion to the consent items and/or action?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent items as read. I'll second.
Okay. Motion in a second then that we adopt the consent items as read. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number one. Discussion and/or action on appointing a chair and vice chair to the Weaver County Commission.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Kerry Gibson as the chair and Matthew Bell as the vice chair of the Weaver County Commission.
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second on the floor that we appoint Commissioner Gibson as the chair, Commissioner Bell as the vice chair of the commission. Discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Item number two. Request for approval of an interlocal agreement by and between Weaver County and Morgan County ratifying the creation of Weaver Human Services to provide a variety of human services on a cooperative basis. And presenting today on this item will be Mr. Wilson. Good to see you, Mr. Wilson. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome to the new commissioner as well. And I note that Kevin Eastman, the Executive Director of Human Services, is in the audience here. Commissioners, in the early 90s, Weaver Human Services was created by Weaver and Morgan Counties. It is a separate interlocal entity, which means it's a political subdivision similar to a special district and is recognized as such by the state. Nevertheless, the county commission still has and retains the responsibility for substance abuse services and mental health services within the county. You have chosen to do so or past commissions have chosen to do so through the creation of Weaver Human Services. In addition, and unique to Weaver County and Morgan Counties, they also provide aging services. This was originally created, I think it was 92 or 93, and has been modified a couple of times since. As with any other document or organization, from time to time, we need to update and notice last time that we need to clarify the board appointments. The board is comprised of eight members. The three county commissioners, you sit on that board, two Morgan County council people as appointed by Morgan County, and then what I call the three lay expertise members, one each representing aging, one representing substance abuse, and one representing mental health. In the next item today, and Morgan has, I'll note that Morgan has previously approved this agreement, I think they did it in November, and so if you approve it today, it will go into place. I've mentioned the Board of Directors today in the next item. You will be considering appointments to the aging and substance abuse positions on that board. The terms, as you consider in the next item, I don't mean to preempt to you, Commissioner Gibson, but the terms are going to be different for these two that are appointed. Somehow, we got out of sync at Weaver Human Services. The idea was the three lay members, one would be appointed each year, so with the appointments we consider in the next item, that will be the case and puts us back on track there. The agreement is for 50 years, but may be terminated early by giving a one-year notice by either Weaver or Morgan Counties. Unless you have other questions, since it's been in existence for some period of time, I won't go into further depth, but be happy to answer questions and would recommend approval.
Well, Dave, the bylaws, the resolution adopting the bylaws, that can take effect as soon as we pass it, right? Today, the appointments would have to go back to Morgan, then back to us, is that right?
That is correct. This interlocal will be in effect today and then we will conform. Weaver Human Services, you sitting as board members, will approve the bylaws that operate, how it operates over there.
So, my question is, in 50 years, when it expires, will you be here to renew that for us?
I will not. I doubt I'll be on this earth even. Well, I might be in the earth.
But no, okay. I just kind of wondered what you were doing there, giving us a 50-year contract and you're not going to be around to renew it, so.
That's the maximum you can do unless it's a power plant or something like that.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
All right. Kevin, you want to say anything? Want to come up and tell us if you got anything you want to say? Sure. This is your opportunity. Okay. We appreciate Kevin. He holds that operation together very well over there at Weaver Human Services. Very grateful for his hard work. All right, Commissioners, we've had this for a while to study it. Is there any action you'd like to take on this today?
So, we don't need a resolution number, a contract number, or anything?
It's contract number two.
Contract number two?
Number one is under the consent item.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion. We've been working on this for a long time and I'll make a motion that we accept this interlocal agreement between Weaver County and Morgan County. Contract number two.
I will second.
Okay. Motion in a second then to adopt and approve contract number two between Weaver County and Morgan County, the interlocal agreement creating Weaver Human Services. Is there discussion to the motion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. So, as mentioned, item number three is the request for approval of the resolution of the county commissioners providing notice of its intent to appoint two members to the Weaver Human Services governing board. So, notice of intent is simply as we described before because per the bylaws that we just approved, we recommend two names to Morgan County. They agree or disagree and then they come back to us to ratify. So, it's not a final approval, it's our notice to intent, notice of intent. We do have a list of several names that have been forwarded by the different committees from Weaver Human Services and you have those before you, so if you're ready for discussion or a motion on this item, please do so.
So, Dave, do we need to appoint Commissioner Ebert to this board or does it happen when he became Commissioner?
Happens automatically.
So, you don't need him in the... Well, I'll make a motion that we appoint to the Board of Weaver Human Services, that we appoint, this will be number, resolution number one, right? Resolution number one, that we appoint Bob Hunter and Julie Southwick to members of the governing board of Weaver Human Services.
Commissioner, if I could interrupt one, if we clarify what position they're representing in aging or substance abuse.
Okay. Julie Southwick will represent substance abuse and Bob Hunter will represent the young folks on the board. Oh, aging, I mean.
We should have not had to make that distinction, Robert, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to.
The attorney made us do that.
I'll second the motion.
All right. So, the motion then, and just to clarify, those names, both of those were on the list provided by the committees as well, so. All right. Is there any discussion to that motion then that's on the floor?
I would just like to say that...
I've worked a tremendous amount with Mr. Hunter and I'm excited to have him on the board. He will bring a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience and a very valued opinion, so.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? I wholeheartedly agree with that. We're excited to work with Mr. Hunter and Ms. Southwick as well. I had the opportunity to meet her and she's intelligent and bright and I'm looking forward to working with both of them, so. All right. If there's no further discussion then, Fatima, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
And Chair Gibson?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Ms. Wilson, if you'll come up. The next item on the agenda is approval of a resolution of the county commissioners appointing members to the fair board. And, oh, that was a little crackly, huh?
Geez, it's going to get electrocuted. Should be a warning sign, don't touch. Good morning, Commissioners.
So, yeah, tell us what we've got on the fair board.
Of course, at the new year, we want to reappoint and appoint some new board members to the fair board. We meet once a month to plan and organize the fair. And right now, the names that have been requested to come to you, there are three new reappointments for the four-year terms, which are Glenda Lee, Susan Clontz, and Betty Barrow. And then there's one, a reappointment for a one-year term for Larry Hanson, and then another reappointment for a one-year term for our mayor, which let me explain. A few years ago, we decided that it would be really nice to have an input from, input from a mayor's standpoint for the fair. And so, we have been working with the commission to have them, with WACOG, appoint a mayor. And I do believe that the mayor that was asked to be reappointed was Bruce Higley and so he would be another reappointment. And then the new appointment for a one-year term would be Laura Parker.
Okay, thank you. And that is correct, that Mayor Higley was recommended last evening by the Council of Governments as the representative from the council. And so, we, I think it's a good idea for us to adopt that recommendation. He has been serving and serving very well, so we appreciate him. So, Commissioners, that will fill, if we reappoint Mayor Higley, Susan Clontz, Betty Barrow, Glenda Lee, Laura Parker, and Larry Hanson, that will fill 12 seats, which is what we ended up with last year. We also have the ability in our bylaws to go to 15. We've had 15 at different times. My recommendation is that we appoint these members and get our 12 up and running, make sure that they're good to go for this planning that's getting in the middle of it already. It's getting hot and heavy already. And then determine at a later date if we want to add to that number. My recommendation.
So, I'll make a motion, resolution number two, that we appoint the four people you just mentioned to the board.
That would be five.
Five people.
And I'll just read those again for the record. Susan Clontz, Betty Barrow, Glenda Lee, Laura Parker, and Larry Hanson.
Second.
Is that right?
And Bruce.
Oh, excuse me. So, there's six with Bruce.
Correct.
Mayor Higley. Okay, so is that the motion?
That's the motion.
In a second?
Again, second.
Okay. Sounds good. And just before we vote, just as a sideline, we also have a couple of representatives from the 4-H or from the, yeah, from the extension, I should say, from extension, USU extension. And Ally Tusher, who is the new 4-H agent, will fill one of those along with Naomi Brower. So, James Barnhill will not be on the board anymore and helping those other two.
Correct. He'll be helping in a different capacity on the fair.
Okay. Great. Sounds good. All right. Any further discussion to the motion? Okay. Seeing none then, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Bell?
I said roll call.
Oh, is that a resolution? It's a res. Okay. All in favor, on a roll call.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Jan. Appreciate you bringing those to us. We're moving on then to item number five. Resolution, request for approval of resolution of the county commissioners appointing members to the Golden Spike Events Center Advisory Board. Jennifer, good to see you.
Good morning. Good morning. At this time, we actually have three vacancies on the board, but we have one name that we want to bring forward. Our board is still actively interviewing and searching out for the other two and then are going to discuss that more at the next board meeting later this month, but for right now, I'd like to bring forth Lisa Galvez's name as a board appointee. Lisa was willing and was appointed to our board last year, but then shortly afterwards, some personal circumstances came up and she had to forego the appointment and since then, we've been in contact with her and she is ready now to be reappointed. We think she'll be a great addition to the board and bring on some real, a different perspective. So, this name was brought forward at our board meeting and presented today.
Okay. Commissioner Bell, you're our liaison commissioner with that board. Any comments on that you'd like to share?
Yes, we have a couple other names we're working on and we just haven't had a chance to get them interviewed yet. We'd like to interview them before we do it because it's a little time commitment once a month and we got different activities and things going out there, so I think Lisa will be a great fit for the board. They are, these boards are, do a lot of great things out there at the fairgrounds. They volunteer a lot of time and their resources, so. And Lisa will be, I think, a great addition to our board, so. So, I'll make a motion, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sounds great.
That will put Lisa Galvez, resolution number three, appoint her to the Golden Spike Events Center Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve resolution number three, appointing Lisa Galvez to the Golden Spike Events Center Advisory Board. Is there discussion to the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your work at that great facility. It's one that we're very proud of. All right. Our next item is the request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weaver County appointing members to the Weaver-Morgan Health Department. Commissioner Bell, you want to take that one?
Thank you. Our director's here. I appreciate them. We got some folks from our health department. We got Brian Benyon here and Kay Liasson. And this is a great organization. We've been going through a little change over there because we got a new health director, been there about a year now, right? And so, some changes there have taken place and we've got two board members who we want to reappoint. One is Ken Johnson. He works at the university, does a phenomenal job for us there. And just as a side note, he was appointed as chair of the National Organization of Health Departments, which is kind of a big deal. And he does a great job and brings us a lot of great insight. And then the other person we have on there is Dave Holstrom and Dave does a great job for us. So, I'll make a motion, resolution number four, that we appoint Ken Johnson and Dave Holstrom to the Weaver-Morgan Health Department.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second then to adopt resolution number four, appointing Ken Johnson and Dave Holstrom, reappointing them to the Board of Health. Is there discussion of that motion? Pretty good explanation? Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Item number seven. Request for approval of a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Weaver County, making appointments to the Weaver Area Dispatch 911 and Emergency Services District Administrative Control Board. Thank you, Kevin. As you know, the Administrative Control Board is a little different than some of these that we've dealt with. It is exactly that, as we just explained, an administrative control board. So, the process is just a little bit different, but Commissioner Bell, you're on to present this.
So, so this is another board where we have joint members on these boards. The last board we just did was Weaver-Morgan Health Department, which has some from the WACOG, which is the area of mayors. They put some appointees on the board and then the county commissioners put some appointees on the board. Same thing here with the 911 district it was created. It's probably been around about 10 years, I'm thinking. So, we've got some names. So, some of the names that we're appointing today are, came from our WACOG, which is yesterday, we met yesterday and they gave us some names to bring forward. And we're going to bring those forward names and then we have some names that we are going to bring forward, so.
So, Dave, just explain to us quickly by, per the bylaws, where are those names? I mean, there's a certain number that come as a recommendation to the COG, but then are, but then have to be ratified by the commission, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then?
And this time around, we had two from the COG that expired and in the resolution there, you'll see the blank ones, we had two from the COG and one commission appointee that have expired and those three positions need to be filled via two recommendations from WACOG and one that the commission appoints directly. The commission appoints everybody, but they have, by reason of the originating documents, they have to receive and appoint from the WACOG recommendations for those two positions. That was Clarice Mudd, sorry.
Yeah. So, but we have, but do we have another opening?
Yes, because we have...
So, we had a resignation this morning and so we really have four openings.
No, that's the third one, right?
No, it's the fourth one. It'll be the fourth one.
Okay. Explain it.
So, we have four openings. The COG has two openings. The commission had one opening and then we had one of our commission openings resign.
Oh, that's right. That is correct.
So, we have four openings.
Right.
So, the COG has recommended Mayor Willard Craigan and Mayor Toby Molesky. So, I'll make that motion, resolution number five. And then the commission brings forward the name of Commissioner James Ebert and Leonard Call as our two. So, those are the four names. Commissioner Ebert and Leonard Call and then Mayor Craigan and Mayor Molesky.
Now, that can all be done in one resolution, can it, Dave? It is.
That is correct. A prepared resolution to that effect, given the resignation of Mr. Blackburn, so we will fill that in. He will fill an unexpired term and be reappointed, someone to be reappointed there in 2016.
Exactly.
And just for your information, the resignation of Mr. Blackburn came as a result of the fact that he's the city manager in Roy and the Roy mayor was one that was appointed last night by the COG. So, I think it's good to spread that out a little bit and not have two, two folks from the administration of one city on that board, so that's the, that was the reasoning behind that. Okay? So, we have a motion on the floor then, adopting the resolution, which would be number five, appointing Mr. Craigan, Mr. Huh?
Molesky.
Molesky. Mr. Call.
Commissioner Ebert.
Commissioner Ebert.
I second the motion.
Motion in a second on the floor. Motion and second on the floor. Is there discussion of that motion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Fatima. And to our final item on the agenda, not our final, oh, yeah, what happened? Did I miss one?
No, it was just.
It was just added. All right, okay, this is an old document. Okay, item number eight, request for approval of a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, appointing members to the Roy Water Conservancy District. Brooke, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You.
Today I bring before you two vacancies for the Roy Water Conservancy District. As the legislative body, the district contacted the commission office to post notice and publicize that they had two vacancies for their district. There's a vacancy in District One and a vacancy in District Two. Those notices and publications were done according to the state statutes. These will be four-year terms that will run through January 1st, 2019. We had two applications for the District One position. One application was from Mr. Gary Newman. He's the current chairman in District One. Robert Checkets, he lies within the boundaries of District One. And then we have one application from the current vice chairman, Tommy Smith, for the District Two position. Can answer any questions you might have?
Well, first of all, let me just say, I know this is a ton of work. It's interesting. We have a lot of these districts and boards that, that we are responsible to make appointments to. But we generally, by their, per bylaws, per their bylaws, need to wait for them to make a request for us to appoint these boards. And so first of all, I've got to hand it to the, to the Roy district for, for being on top of this early because it, it is a little process. It takes some posting and some notice and things like that. And, and to have this done in the first meeting of the year and make them official is a good thing because we got a whole bunch of them.
That's right.
That aren't on our agenda today because they didn't bring it forward in a timely manner. So we'll get those done as soon as we get notice from them that they would like us to proceed with it. Unfortunately, that kind of puts them in a little bit of a precarious situation if they don't get it done because technically they're not legal if their board members have expired or terms have expired or something like that. So anyway, congratulations to the board for their work. I see several of the board members from this district here today. Is there any comment that you would like to make on this issue, any of you?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we do have the three applications in front of us. We have the two individuals who are currently serving, who have requested to, to return. We also have the application from Mr. Checkets, which is frankly, a very impressive application as well. So Commissioners, what's your thoughts and pleasure? Got a narrow three to two in this particular case. Ideas? Commissioner?
I don't have any ideas.
Wish you had a little more experience and I hope to gain some more experience.
That's what this is for today.
At this point, I, I don't have a direction to go.
Well, Commissioners, I have, I have studied this and talked with several members as well and, and my recommendation is that, that we follow the recommendation of the board that they sent forward to us, which is that we reappoint Mr. Newman and Mr. Smith to serve an additional term on this board.
I second that.
That mine's a recommendation, if you want to make a motion, that'd be great. Would you make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Great.
Go ahead.
And you seconded it?
Resolution number six.
Okay. Motion is to adopt resolution number six, appointing Mr. Newman and Mr. Smith, reappointing them to serve on the Roy Water Conservancy District Board. Discussion to the motion? Roll call, vote. Fatima?
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Brooke, for your work on this. Item number eight, excuse me, item number nine, is the request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and EDA Architects Incorporated for professional services for renovation of the North Branch Library. And our library director, Linda, is at the podium. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Pleasure to be here and present this agreement for professional services for EDA Architects for, as you noted, renovation of the North Branch Library. The agreement, as is the custom with contractual agreements for building projects, is in two parts. The first is a standard form of agreement between the owner, Weber County, and the architect for responsibilities for designing the project. It includes such things as the architect's responsibility for designing weather-tight and efficient-to-operate buildings, their geotechnical fee schedules and their, the boundaries for any additional fees that they might wish to charge, that they were approved by the county. The compensation for the services is set at 6% of the total cost of construction, with limits on the cost being benchmarked at the completion of the design development phase, which gives the county firm control over the overall, or over the total amount of the construction. The second part of the agreement is with the architect to oversee the actual construction or the renovation of the project. And of course, this is to ensure that what is designed by the architect and paid for by the county is what is actually delivered by the construction company. The agreement has been reviewed by legal counsel in the county, Mr. Chris Allred, and it was reviewed by the library board in November. With your approval of the contract, we would begin to explore conceptual designs for the North Branch and to obtain solid cost estimates over the next several months. Our goal is to stay on schedule and budget with the North Branch project, having it ready to bid during September of 2015. So with that overview, I'd be pleased to answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. Ebert? The benchmarking, what are we benchmarked at? Is that the estimated cost from our initial estimation? Is that the $5 million? Is that where the benchmark is or would you say?
Five million was the authorized amount, but once the architects are on board, we will begin to work backward from that amount to see what is actually required to put the project in place.
What, do we own the property that building's on?
We do.
That is our lot, our parking, or part of its ours, or joint, or?
Well, we own part of the lot that we use for parking. The other portion is owned by North Ogden City and we have an agreement with them that we share the parking and the maintenance and so forth. It's been a very good relationship with North Ogden City. They've been fantastic to work with. We don't own the property to the south of the building, but we own all of the property that the library sits on and the portion of the lot that is to the north of the building.
So if we, if we end up needing to move a skate park and stuff like that, this will all be part of what the architects will put together?
That is correct.
Is this going to be part of the cost when they get done? At the end of the day, they're going to say it's going to cost XYZ. As we put this together, will they give us other op, different options, say rather, to finish the basement or finish the basement, do an addition on, or to do?
You're exactly correct.
So there'll be some with the board, Commissioner Ebert will be the liaison somewhere, will work along with the city. I see our good mayor from North Ogden here with us today. They'll work on with that, them and come up with a, with a plan that will work financially and do what we need done.
Right, you stated it perfectly. The architects need to be on board to evaluate the existing facility and to look at all of the options that are available to see which works best for service to the public as well as what is the least expensive in terms of updating that existing library for modern library services.
So Will, I assume that you'll do a public meeting and ask the public what their thoughts are somewhere along the line? Or maybe you've already done that?
Well, we've done that, you're right, but we're going to do it again. We, we did that initially to get a broad overview of public desires for their library system. But then as we move forward with each building, we hold additional community meetings to make sure that they're personalized for the area of the county that they're serving. There are some things, obviously, that are same across all libraries, children's services, for example. But there may be special services that a particular community is interested in. For example, at Pleasant Valley Branch, we have a consumer health center there. That happened for a lot of reasons, but primarily because it's across the street from Ogden Regional Hospital and we had an opportunity for partnership. So we're looking for partnerships in all of the facilities that enrich the community as well as the library system. And these community meetings that you referred to will be where perhaps some of those will develop.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Ebert, anything else?
Will, I don't know if you're going to ask Mayor, if he would like to stand for a second. I've met with Linda and we've talked a little bit about libraries and about the North Ogden Branch and about the overall projects that are, that are presently going forward. And she's, she's committed to continuing the process of being very sensitive to the spending and the amount of money going forward. And I've been pleased with what I've seen and the commitment from her and from the library board. They've done a very good job. Going forward, that the commission wants to be involved in the design, direction, vision and, and we've already spent some time doing that together. And so I, I'm pleased with, with what we're doing and the direction we're going. So I'm happy to see what we're looking at in the North Ogden Branch moving forward.
Okay. Appreciate that comment. I agree and I, again, want to thank, it's been pointed out, Mayor Taylor's here. We do appreciate the working relationship that we have with, with North Ogden City and frankly, with all of our, all of our partner cities. We're all in this thing together, whether it's libraries or, you know, really anything that we do in this county. We can't do without those partners. I think we're blessed right now to have a great working relationship with all of our mayors, with all of our cities, with our council of governments. And it is really, really exciting to think of the possibilities because of that collaborative nature and willingness to work together. So we, we intend to continue that and, and help that to move forward as best that we possibly can. Look forward to this building starting to come together and North Ogden get fixed the way we want it to, so. All right, any other questions then for Linda on this contract? All right, let's have a motion.
What contract are we on?
Three.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve contract number three, buying between Weber County and EDA Architects for a professional service in the renovation of the North Ogden Branch.
I second it.
Okay, motion and second then that we adopt contract number three between Weber County and EDA Architects. Discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Linda. And just by way of announcement, in case you didn't catch that already through the discussion, Commissioner Ebert has been assigned as the, as the commission liaison to work with the library and get these projects moving, moving forward. So we appreciate his willingness to accept that assignment. Linda, I'm sure that the two of you will find that you have a lot in common and a lot, a lot of common interests that will work together just great.
Might be much to your chagrin, but I enjoy working with you, so thank you.
We're looking forward to getting to work with you, so thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Next is our assignment of the Pledge of Allegiance and Thought of the Day for Tuesday, January 13th. Oh, excuse me, I didn't want to skip that. We've been, we've moved those around a little bit in times past. So we'll go back to public comment. Is there any in the public, from the public, who would like to comment today? If you'd like to comment, please come forward. Mayor Taylor, welcome. Come forward, take the microphone, state your name for the record, even though we all know who you are.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mayor Brent Taylor from North Ogden. And after seeing through all of this meeting, I certainly want to at least have the public comment. So thank you, Commissioner Bell, for putting that back on the agenda.
Well, it was coming on, it was just coming next.
I just wanted to say a few things, Commissioners, about the library and welcome Commissioner Ebert and congratulations to all the new county officials. And also wanted to say the live streaming, it's a great step. Really appreciate the county doing that for those of us that, you know, might not be able to make this meeting. So a great step forward. But just a few things on the library, I wanted to share with the whole commission and especially Commissioner Ebert, since he'll be over the libraries now, because there's some timelines that are coming up that we've got to be sensitive to, especially if we're considering moving the skate park. I'd approached Linda, actually, it wasn't necessarily, the library didn't come to us, going to ask us for that land to the south. I'd approached her about nine months ago and Commissioner Zogmeister about potentially the city donating that land to the south and expanding the library to the south instead of necessarily just doing it into the basement. For a lot of reasons, it's a lot better for the parents to have everything on one level. It would allow for the library to be on one level, the main services, expand it to the south instead of putting those into the basement. And I'm sure there's other purposes the basement could be used for, bookstore, circulation, offices, those kind of things, to still be a useful public space. But the library itself could expand to the south and be able to, I think, better serve the needs of the community. Also, I think there's a unique opportunity with this renovation to provide a library that has some other services for the community, similar to several of the other libraries in the system, like the Pleasant Valley Library. And I just wanted to come and give my support for that idea to the commission and, and share that, that I think that would be a great fit for the community that that library serves. It's one of the busiest libraries, either the first or second busiest per capita. There's a lot of families and there's a lot of growth in the communities that use that library. I know we have over a thousand lots currently in one stage of development or another in our city. Pleasant View has a lot. There's a lot of growth in, in that north end of the county. And having kind of that community center-type library that has some of those meeting rooms and things for nonprofit groups to hold their classes or meetings is something that's really needed in that part of the county. And I think there's a unique opportunity to do that with the funds that were, you know, put on the bond by the voters, but also with some fundraising. And I've committed to being involved with that fundraising. There's a lot of private donations that were made for the Pleasant Valley Branch. And I think there's a good opportunity here for public-private partnership to do some of those enhancements to this library without increasing the bond to the taxpayers, but by getting a fundraising approach, going to some of these foundations and things that look forward to sponsoring rooms or sponsoring things. So I just want you to know that I, I hope we can do something like that and I'm committed to helping out as a partner to the county in raising those funds. And also Mayor Molesky, I can speak, I think, for him as well. He's live streaming and we've been texting. And he sent me an email which I'll forward to all of the commissioners. So you've got at least one person out there on the live stream.
Got 20, actually.
20, okay.
And I'm one of them right here.
He sent, he sent a letter of support as well that I'll forward to all three of you commissioners for the idea of a, a community center-type library. That has some of those other features that, public spaces that could really be used in that area. And I think we can do it with the amount that was bonded for, but with a public-private partnership, looking for some donations. And I'm ready and willing to help out with that process. So I'm just hopeful we can do some kind of partnership like that and really do a nice library there. And the reason I'm, I'm here to talk about it today is the grant application is what we're hoping to get some funds to move the skate park with, and that's due on January 15th. So we kind of need some, you know, guidance from the commission if, if the commission's okay moving forward in that direction because we at least need to get our application in for that. So please give that some thought and then our city's looking to put in that grant application to be able to move the skate park and then have that land be available for donation and to the library at no cost. So that's my comments. I'm sorry, went over three minutes. Do you have any questions from me, gentlemen, for the city?
I don't. But we look forward to dialogue in the future. Appreciate it. Commissioner, did you have a question?
We appreciate working with North Ogden. It's been a great relationship. We enjoy working with you, Mayor Taylor. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, is there other public comment? I didn't hold him to three minutes, so we could probably go a little over. Okay, now then we'll move on to our assignment of the Pledge of Allegiance and Thought of the Day for Tuesday, January 13th, 2015 at 10:00 AM. Let's see here, who would like to volunteer for me for a pledge of allegiance? What's that? Okay, Dave first. Ricky, you're next, all right? Okay, Mr. Wilson will offer our pledge of allegiance. The thought of the day will be Commissioner Ebert. Okay? Is that okay with you, Commissioner Bell?
They usually skip me every other time anyway, so I'm okay with that. I get it.
We'll just.
Thank you. Be happy to do it.
Great. All right, let me just close up by saying thank you again to our IT staff. Commissioner Bell, as, as he mentioned, has got it up. Do we still have 20?
We have 20.
Last, yesterday, we bounced around from 16 or 17 to 22 or 23 in our, in our inauguration ceremony. And today, have we, have we peaked above that at all? Have we been around 20 the whole time, guys? Somewhere around there? So we're hoping that, that each of you take the opportunity to participate in some way and there's just another option. Bottom line, I just want to say, you know, this commission, I, I'm, I'm looking very much forward to working with each and every, with both of you, as well as the public, to do great things for this county. This is just one example. I think you'll see some more exciting things coming in the next coming days and weeks. I think that you'll find that, that you have three commissioners that will not be content to sit back and, and just take a ride. We're going to aggressively advocate for our community that we care about so much. We are looking forward to making some major announcements in economic development, quality of life issues, all kinds of stuff that you might be excited to hear about in the next couple of weeks. So we appreciate your support. We appreciate your willingness to participate and all I can say is, stay tuned. Okay? Final motion?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, that we adjourn. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.